Good evening. I'd like to welcome you here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning the meeting. And before we do, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Amelia Williams will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I pray for the protection of all the people of Springdale. I pray for those suffering and give you thanks for the beauty you have given us in every moment of today. I pray, Lord, that our community work together for the common good and that you help this council seek your wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of our residents. Lord, help this city to continue to prosper and provide an abundance of services and opportunities for all of our residents. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Amelia. All right. I'd like to again welcome everyone here tonight. This is the Tuesday, March 28th, 2023, regular meeting of Springdale City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And first thing we'll do is ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson. Mike Overton. Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey. Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fugierus.
Here.
Ernest Cate.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Item four. This is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside for to hear comments from our residents. If there are any residents that would like to address the council, we ask that you go to your, go to the podium there, the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief, understanding that the council won't take action tonight on whatever you bring forward. So is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five. And I'll turn it over to our city attorney, Ernest Cate.
Thank you. Council, item 14, last item on the agenda, is an ordinance on a petition to change the name of an existing city street. And under our ordinance, required to hold a public hearing before you take up the ordinance. So that's why it's on the agenda. So is there anyone that would like to comment on the petition to change the name of a public street? It's actually asking to change it from Metroplex Drive to Animal Emergency Drive. Okay? We'll close the public hearing.
I'd like to ask some questions.
We'll get to it on item 14.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. But the public hearing part.
Okay.
Okay. We'll talk about it when we get to item 14.
All right. Thank you. Item six is approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second, to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item seven, what's your pleasure, council, on procedural motions?
Second.
Motion, a second, for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell. Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Carry seven, zero.
All right. We're going to do an employee recognition. And I'm going to ask Shane and, is Greg here? I hadn't seen Greg.
Yeah, he's there.
Okay. I'll meet you all at the podium there, all right? Uh, council, we've got employee recognition here. You know, we do these once a month. And, uh, and I've asked Greg to come. Greg is over all our custodial staff, and they do, they do an amazing work. And their job's about to get a whole lot bigger, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
When we get into that new building. But anyway, I'll turn it over to Greg.
I'd like to take his time to show appreciation to Shane. He started with the city back in 2017. He's a maintenance specialist, number two. Uh, he's always willing to show and willing to learn. And he's become one of my main leaders in my department. And last year, we've taken on a lot of duties. And anytime we have anything extra, he's willing to take it on without any question. Just one of the things he's done before is we might have a problem with some equipment, excuse me, over the weekend, and he always volunteers to come up and check on things, make sure we didn't have any further problems. Shane, I would like to take this time and say thank you for what you do for our department and for the city.
Thank you all.
Okay. And at Potluck, he makes great deer chili. So we like that, too. But Shane, this is just a little token of the city's appreciation. I hope you enjoy that and make good use of it. And we really do appreciate your work, your attitude, everything about what you do is excellent. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's right. All right. Uh, item nine. A resolution authorizing the temporary operation of a carnival. Do you have anything to add? I read it, so I'll lay it there. Council, what's your pleasure? Yeah, we do, we do this every year for this particular event, I think. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, Denise?
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carry seven, zero.
Okay, great. Thank you. Item 10, planning commission report and recommendations. Uh, Patsy is out tonight, so, uh, she's asked, uh, in her stead for Rick Barry to do the presentation of the planning commission report and recommendations. Rick?
Yes, sir. And all of these have emergency clauses. Before I forget, our first item is approximately 2.23 acres and was approved 9-0 by the planning commission on the March 7th meeting date. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to general commercial C2 and declaring an emergency for R2308.
Mayor, do you know if we're going to have any more road construction out there in that area, in that size of road? Is there any?
I don't. I don't know where it would be, Rex. I really, I don't think so. I don't see any improvements. 48th would be the only real possibility that I see, and I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Roll. Anyone? Okay. Thanks, Denise. Go ahead.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Second.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Both the ordinance mercy clause carry seven, zero.
Hey, Rick?
All right. The next item is approximately one acre. And as you'll see, it's over on Turner Street. It is rezoned from I2 to C2, ordinance, uh, amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from general industrial district I2 to general commercial district C2 and declaring an emergency. And I apologize, I forgot to mention that this also passed 9-0.
Okay. This is just south of Dimes, right?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Bailey.
Yes.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the merge clause be adopted.
Second.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Both the ordinance mercy clause carry seven, zero.
All right. Next up is a parcel of approximately 2.40 acres, uh, rezoned from A1 to SF2. Uh, this also passed or was approved 9-0 at planning commission on March 7th and ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to low-density, single-family residential district SF1 and declaring an emergency for R23-10.
I have conflicting.
Yeah.
Information. I have one that says SF2 and one that says SF1.
Our, our agenda says moving, going to SF1. Is that incorrect?
Uh, yeah, that's written there. Sorry about that.
Should be, should be SF?
To SF2. Yes, sir.
Okay. To SF2. Okay.
So, so the ordinance, Ernest?
Yeah.
The title to the ordinance says SF1, but the whereas clause says SF2.
Is it SF1 or SF2? The map also says SF1.
Section 1 also says SF1.
Might want to recheck the petition.
In the ordinance.
Gotcha.
The one that's written out says SF2. The one that's on our screen says SF2.
Do you have that petition?
Well, I'm looking at the ordinance on my notebook.
Yeah.
Oh, here we go. Petition says SF1, sir.
SF1, so we need to amend.
So the only thing that needs to be amended is the first whereas to SF1?
You said it anywhere else, Jeff?
No.
I think I'd say it, isn't it?
So it's SF1 we're talking about?
That is correct.
So the first whereas would be changed to SF1?
So did we have a motion? Did we? Then I'd entertain a motion, uh, to approve as amended to read SF1.
I will make an, make a motion to approve with the amended SF1.
Okay.
So, um, we hardly ever see SF1. What is that again?
All right. So SF1 is single-family residential. Uh, your minimum frontage is going to be 80 feet. Your setbacks in the front are going to be 30, uh, back setback 20. Uh, sides are going to be eight. Uh, minimum 10,000 square feet. Uh, less than four units per acre, 35-foot max height.
Okay.
Bigger lot than an SF2.
Bigger lots and less density, I guess, than an SF2.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay. Roll call, please.
Fugierus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Move merge clause be adopted.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Both the ordinance mercy clause carry seven, zero.
All right. And so next, we've got about 2.5 acres on Seaton Drive, rezoned at the March 7th, 2023 meeting from A1 to C5, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to thoroughfare commercial district C5 and declaring an emergency.
Was there any opposition at planning?
Um, none that I can recall. No, sir.
Seaton Drive's all residential, correct? That's all duplexes?
I can't speak to that, but based on the map, that's.
How close is, uh, remind me, the extension of Emma over I-49? Is it a block or is it, uh, is it along Rusty? Does it get closer to Rusty Lane?
I believe that if you see that O1 that's in the bottom, uh, left-hand corner, I think it's just a hair south of that.
Oh, okay.
So then it kind of creeps up along where you see the floodway there.
Okay. All right.
Move the ordinance pass.
Motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments from anyone?
So, so none of these residences that are surrounding this property had any opposition?
I don't believe so. I think there were questions asked. I don't believe that there was any outward opposition, but I can get back to you on that.
No one here, mayor?
No. Doesn't look like it. No one to comment on this? Okay. All right. We have, we have a motion, a second.
Correct.
All right. Roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Move merge clause be adopted.
Second.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Both the ordinance mercy clause carry seven, zero.
All right. Next up, we have about 10.8 acres, uh, being rezoned at the March 7th, 2023 meeting from A1 to C6 and I2. And this was also a 9-0 vote by the planning commission. An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to large product retail sales district C6 and general industrial district I2 and declaring an emergency for R23-13.
Move the ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any further comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Move merge clause be adopted.
Second.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance mercy clause carry seven, zero.
Next up is another rezone approved 9-0 at the March 7th, 2023 planning commission meeting. It's approximately 7.9 acres over off of Old Wire Road. An ordinance being, uh, I'm sorry, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to large product retail sales C6 and general industrial district I2 and declaring an emergency for R23-14.
Ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes.
Merge clause be adopted.
Second.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson. Lawson. Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance mercy clause carry seven, zero.
Got one more. That was the last one? Okay. Gotcha. All right. Item 11. Community Development Block Grant Program. And chairman is Rex Bailey. Rex?
Yeah. We, uh, has a, we have a resolution authorizing execution of a contract renovation of American League facilities, Tyson Park. Uh, this is passed with, with no opposition. This is, um, to replace the surface of the field out there.
Right.
All right. Right.
I'll make a motion that the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay. Denise?
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Carry seven, zero.
Great. Thank you. Item 12, Finance Committee Chairman Amelia Williams. Amelia?
Our first item on the agenda is item A, a resolution to authorize the provision of government services for the citizens of Springdale, Arkansas from the American Recover Plan Act funds or ARPA funds. I believe, um, both Kobe and, um, both Kobe can speak to this if anybody has any questions.
Now, when we do this, we have it double-checked, right? We have it checked by the Arkansas, uh, municipal league. Is that Greg?
Uh, municipal league.
On the ARPA league or ARPA funds?
Yeah, so, yeah, so disaster recovery services, our, our compliance consultants. Um, we went over this beforehand. In fact, in, on the, behind the resolution, you'll see their summary of the eligibility of, of allocating this money for the ballpark. Um, this is, this is one of the things we can allocate lost revenue towards, especially to, for the public facilities board, for the ballpark, for regularly scheduled maintenance and, and projects at the ballpark. So that's, that's why we're able to use this money for the ballpark.
This is truly lost revenue.
This is, this is real lost revenue. And, and this is, and the numbers are based off of the revenue in 2020 we did not receive because the season was shut down and also the discount we gave in 2021 for the shortened season of the ballpark. Otherwise, the naturals would have paid us this money otherwise, which would have gone into this fund to pay for the projects.
Right. We get a second?
We don't have a motion.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Okay. Okay, motion and second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to approve change order number one to the construction contract with Emery Sapp and Sons Incorporated for the detention pond project at Springdale Airport. This was discussed last week as well. And I think it was due to the uh, federal change of the administration and therefore.
Yeah, it was a two-year delay from the day we, we bid the contract until we were able to actually go to construction because of the, uh, need to get an individual permit from the Army Corps of Engineers.
Move the resolution pass.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
Item C is a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Springdale to partner with Arkansas Department of Transportation for the following project. Job zero four zero eight nine four highway four twelve improvements in Springdale forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval. And Ben Peters can speak to this if anybody has any questions.
Ben, this is basically our agreement to, uh, have them design the, some additional improvements to the width of the side paths, uh, and, and then after that's designed, this will come back when they're actually asking for an amount. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so. Historically, they've had the amount in this resolution, but they didn't do that this time. I think maybe construction costs have gotten them in the past, so this is to, their normal, um, section is to build a five-foot walk on both sides of the road. What we're asking them to do is to increase the south side of the road to a six-foot sidewalk and the north side of the road to a twelve-foot multi-use trail. And so, we're telling them that that's what we'd like to have, and we'll pay the difference between the five-foot and the six and the twelve, um, when the project actually gets bid, but they'll come back to us with an actual number of what that costs when they bid the project.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman? Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Recuse.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carry six zero one recusal.
Item D is a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement for acquisition services for Don Tyson Parkway, extension and Gene George South, phases two and three. This was also forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve the resolution. Any questions? Comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Our next item is item E, and it is a resolution authorizing the execution of contract change order for the rehabilitation of the Ritter McDonald Law cabin at the Shiloh Museum. And that was also forwarded from committee, um, with a recommendation for approval. And I believe that that money was going to be taken from the, um, Shiloh Board.
Right, Shiloh Board will be funding this.
Yeah, Angie's not here, but we told her we'd cover her, so, yeah.
Yep.
Move that resolution be adopted.
Okay, motion and second to approve the resolution. Anybody else got a comment or question? Okay, Denise?
Harriman? Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item thirteen, Parks and Recreation Committee Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, mayor. I was out last week. I'm not sure who took this.
I was your wingman, buddy.
All right, let's do it.
All right, so there was one item came up in the last committee meeting for Parks and Rec, and it, I will read the title of this resolution. It was forwarded with recommendation for approval. A resolution to appropriate matching grant funds and additional funds for Murphy Park Playground Project and to waive competitive bidding. And Chad's here, and would you tell us where this money's coming from, Chad?
This money will be coming from the park set aside money, the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Uh, and then we got a grant for two hundred and twenty, so should equal total amount.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
All right, item fourteen, turn it back over to our city attorney. Ernest?
Thank you. This is an ordinance amending chapter one-ten, article six, street names and address numbers to change the name of an existing city street. As you can see in the packet, uh, the, uh, new, uh, eight-eight-one Metroplex Drive has requested that the street name, public street name be changed, and I put a map in there where the street is located, be changed to eight-eight-one Animal Emergency Drive, and the ordinance requires, uh, city council action before the street name can be changed. I don't know if there's anyone here from.
I'm here, yeah. Hi, I'm representing the Animal Emergency Specialty Center. How are you?
Good.
Good. Uh, basically, we're relocating. As you know, we are on, uh, seven-seven-seven Matthias Drive, just down the road there, and, uh, from a five thousand square foot facility moving to an eighteen thousand square foot facility. We purchased the Metroplex, um, oh, year and a half ago or so and nearing completion, and, uh, would like to rename that since the Metroplex no longer exists and the Animal Emergency Specialty Center will, uh, we'd like to rename that drive, uh, to coincide with our business.
There, there is a little history on this street. I don't know if you remember. Uh, at one time, this public street was known as Real Bravo Drive, and they got renamed using the same procedure to Metroplex Drive, so.
Was this built as a public street? Was it always a public street?
I, as far as I know, it's always been a public street, yes.
So, Ernest, what I was going to ask a while ago is just procedure. How, how, how does this, how does this procedure take place? Just someone comes in and asks for it to be known, and that's it, or?
Well, the, the ordinance says that someone can petition to change a street name, and then, actually, you all amended this particular ordinance in November, uh, because it used to go to planning commission first. You, uh, changed the ordinance to where it would come straight to, at the request of the IT department, where it would come straight to city council. And, and then the ordinance requires that, uh, notice of the public hearing be published, uh, on our website, which is something else that you had changed as opposed to putting in the newspaper, which saves the city some money and probably increases the amount of people who see it. And then it, uh, ordinance requires a public hearing, which we held at the beginning of the meeting, and then the city council will have to take action. If it's approved, then the IT department would update the, uh, street map. Dispatch would change it in the, in the GIS system. It would all be changed in a new street sign.
What about notice to surrounding properties of owners? Is there any requirement for those to?
No.
Other property owners on the street?
No, just notice of the public hearing.
Does this particular, this particular change, does it change anyone else's address?
No, it does not. We are the sole, uh, business at the end of that street.
You're the sole business on that street, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Are there other properties on the street that are just vacant or?
There are vacant properties owned by, uh, citizens of Springdale, I believe.
Owned by who?
Citizens of Springdale. I think they're privately owned.
Looks like you've got two or three there, Jeff.
Yeah, and we're actually looking into purchase those properties as well.
And maybe one to the north. Of course, that could, that could change too over, I mean, their access in the future may not even come from there.
Yeah, and if, and more than likely those vacant lots or unapproved lots may not even have addresses yet.
No, they do not.
That's right.
One is actually in a hundred-year floodplain, so it's very unlikely that it's, actually will be bought. The other property to the north of us is actually looking to be bought by us as well, uh, for possible, uh, building on that side as well in the years to come.
I remember back when we ever, I remember when that property didn't even have a paved parking lot. It was a dirt parking lot when it was Real Bravo.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a big problem with, with doing this. I just, I just trying to think out loud, you know, if there was, if this was a congested street, you know, and we did it, and there was a whole lot of addresses that have to be changed. Seems like that notice is not perfect. I mean, how to get notice to people living on this, not this in particular, but.
It seems like, seems like peo, to me, that people that have addresses on a street that's a proposed change, they ought to be notified.
That's what I was.
I agree.
Yeah, that's something we can look at, um.
Maybe look at a possible ordinance change.
And, and we don't have these very often, and this one, as Chris is saying, is not going to bother anybody that's involved. Move more? Pass.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerus?
Yes.
Carry six one, doesn't have the emergency clause. Just, just as a side note, you may remember the last time I think we changed street names was after we had the consolidation with Bethel Heights, and we had, I think, two street names in the old Bethel Heights and one street name in Springdale that had to be changed, and we used the same procedure, or as it existed at that time. So, I think that was the last time that we've ever done this.
Okay. All right, we're at item fifteen. Any comments from council members?
Uh, I do.
Okay.
Turn my microphone on. Apologize for that earlier. Uh, two things. Couple of committee meetings ago, I was absent, and I had asked Mike Overton to raise a, a question that I had about, uh, some sign, signage out on Interstate forty-nine.
He did, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know what the discussion was. I think he told me that someone was going to look into it.
We did, somebody did, because I heard of it. Remember the sign that I hadn't noticed? Do you remember it, Mike? Yeah, actually, Mike, you were up there when he brought it up. Can you catch us up on that a little bit?
Sure, we're still embroiled in that process. There's several players involved. The Ayers Health, Horizon Health, the Department of Transportation, as well as the sign company. We're still trying to work through how it all came and how we're going to proceed.
Okay, can.
It has not been forgotten.
And you'll report back to us?
I'll email you when we have something.
All right, thank you. And then the other thing is just kind of thinking out loud, um, is our intersection on Huntsville Avenue, uh, where it comes to, uh, I forty-nine, and, um, how congested that's getting. And, I mean, that, I'm just, like I said, thinking out loud that we need to start thinking, and I don't know if anything can be done in the future, but that area out there is just going to continue to grow, I think, like crazy. And it's already really bad. And it, and if, as it continues to get more businesses out there and more residences on the west side of the interstate, uh, I, I think we just need to be forward-thinking about how we're going to deal with that traffic there.
If we had, well, we, we do think, go ahead, Colby, you're probably going to say what I was going to say about Harbor and Emma.
Har, that Harbor and Emma overpass will definitely help, but, um, in the transportation study that we did, that was an intersection that is at the top of the list, and so they've, they've already got some concepts of some things that we can do at Fortieth and, uh, Elm Springs Road there that should help move traffic, especially with right-hand turn lanes that we don't have there, so you're stuck in line, uh, but that is one of the projects that they have listed there.
Yeah, it seems like a lot of it, when I, when I get really back, a lot of it, maybe it's, is it Fortieth instead of?
Right.
Once you get through Fortieth, it sometimes clears up a little bit.
Mm-huh.
But, and of course, that would be, we'd have to work with the highway department on anything at I forty-nine and Huntsville too, but we can sure.
Yeah, you're right. It's mostly traffic heading west.
Right. And we're hopeful that Emma and Harbor will make it with a new overpass. Will make some difference. We actually think that we're, uh, most people we're talking to believes actually that it'll im, it will improve traffic on Elm Springs Road more than it will on four twelve, which is not necessarily, you know, we'd love for both of them to be improved, but.
Yeah, and, and the first phase of the, what will be the overpass there, uh, between Guttensohn and Fortieth, that should be done sometime at the end of the summer, early fall.
Yeah.
But it, yeah, we won't get much impact, I wouldn't think, until we get the next space built.
No, and, and even when we get the overpass, I mean, we're, there's contin, going to be continued businesses going in at that intersection. It's, it's just going to grow like crazy, I think, and it's, it's, it's going to be congested.
Yep.
Um, on, on that same area, um, there where you exit and you hit, what is that? Is that forty-eighth? Uh, that, that runs along and, and connects Sunset to?
Going south, yeah.
Uh, okay. Is there a way, I know there's going to be a lot done to change that, but until then, is there a way maybe to sync the lights there in a different way where it's not, uh, backing up the traffic to block? You know, because as many people as, as?
Yeah.
Can will go through there, and then there's some that are left out into the intersection. And then when the other light turns green, they can't go anywhere because this light is red. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Right.
The light there at four twelve and Fortieth, that light will be red. The, the light at the, at the end of the exit ramp will be green, but there's nowhere for those cars to go.
We're looking at some, excuse me, some new AI technology that will hopefully set those, because the stoplights are too close together.
Right.
So, it doesn't give you enough room to get all the traffic through.
Right.
So, that's the issue.
Yes.
But we're looking at some new AI technology that can hopefully set those four up in rhythm.
Okay, perfect.
When is the due date on Emma? Anybody know?
April what? Ben?
The due date for the completion of Emma, the contract should be up the first week in June.